Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for June five, two thousand twenty-three. We have three items on our agenda tonight. Our item number one is Sustainable Wheat Ridge Update. Item number two is Waterwise Landscaping Regulations and Programs. And item number three is the Metropolitan Football Stadium District Funding for Youth Activity Program. So those are the type topics that we're going to talk about tonight. If, as we will start our meeting as we usually do with public comment on any of these three items, and I don't have anyone signed up to speak on the sign in sheet here at City Hall, but if you're here and would like to speak and haven't signed up, you may do so now. If you're joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format and we will bring you into the meeting. I'm going to take just a moment and then ask my clerk if we have anyone signed up or raising their hand to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It doesn't look like we have any public comment coming tonight, so we'll move right into our number one item, the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Update. Now go to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling will do the introductions tonight, our assistant city manager.
All right, I'm just gonna turn it right back over to Mary Hester. She's gonna be presenting with her Sustainable Wheat Ridge committee members. Mary Hester is a sustainability coordinator. If you could introduce your co-presenters.
Yes, thank you. I am here tonight with Joy Op, who's one of the co-chairs of our Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, in with Brittany Gimo, who is one of our new members joining in January of this year. So we'll just dive right into it, but thank you for having us tonight. Tonight's presentation is, we're going to change the slide.
Even on hot days, it freezes.
All right, thank you. So tonight's presentation is meant to be informational and we'll be, we will be giving an update on sustainability in Wheat Ridge, mainly focusing on staff and sustainable Wheat Ridge's focus areas for two thousand twenty-three, as well as progress made towards the Sustainability Action Plan and highlights from some of the programs that we have to offer. Yep, it is on. Oh, there it went. All right. So moving into the agenda, I will start us off by highlighting accomplishments from the past year or so, then I'll hand it over to Joy for some Sustainable Wheat Ridge updates. After that, Brittany will move into the committee's six focus areas for the year, starting with the Inflation Reduction Act. And after that, Joy will take us through the other five areas, and then I'll wrap us up with programming highlights, and we'll have time at the end for any questions that you may have. So over the past year or so, Sustainable Wheat Ridge and staff have been able to celebrate several achievements. In April of two thousand twenty, in October of two thousand twenty-two, the first citywide sustainability e-newsletter was published. And this newsletter is now sent out bimonthly to over four hundred and fifty subscribers, which is one of the largest subscriber groups in the city, and we have new regular sign-ups occurring regularly. In November of two thousand twenty-two, a composting ordinance was passed to explicitly allow residential composting. And composting and gardening have been really popular interest in the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, and those are ongoing area of focus for education and events, so it was a very relevant area for us to make some progress in. And I'm not gonna spend too much time on the next three, as they're covered later on in our presentation, but going back to two thousand twenty-one, the committee started giving away the annual Green Business Award and has continued to recognize businesses for their sustainable practices since then. Wheat Ridge was also recently awarded another grant from Charge Ahead Colorado to install two Level Two charging stations at Anderson Park. And lastly, the committee has continued to host regular community-wide events, which we'll cover at the end of this presentation in more detail. And so now I'm gonna hand it over to Joy to talk us through some committee updates.
Thanks, Mary. This has been an exciting and productive year so far for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee. We brought on three new members and have identified six focus areas that we are working on. We're grateful that Councilperson Hulteen has joined our meetings this year, and we feel it has been instrumental in our ability to make progress on our existing action plan. So thank you, Rachel. Our focus areas this year are analyzing the Inflation Reduction Act to identify areas that the city can take advantage of national funding and grant opportunities, partnering with solar companies to identify ways residents can reduce carbon output, supporting public engagement regarding the city's waste management practices, progression on our Green Business Program to model after existing state programs, and updating our Sustainability Action Plan. So now I'll hand it over to Brittany.
Thanks, Joy. One of those focus areas includes the Inflation Reduction Act, or IRA for short, which was signed into law last August by President Biden. It's incredibly dense and hard to fully understand, so to ultra simplify this, it's a bill that directs billions of dollars of federal funds toward boosting clean energy, reducing healthcare costs, and increasing tax revenues. This was the most significant clean energy bill of our time, and as you can probably imagine, it's in its infancy, so a lot of details are still being worked out, and most, most of the programs aren't even officially funded yet. This bill makes federal dollars available to individuals, businesses, cities, and states. They've broken the bill down into five funding categories, which you can see in that third bullet down. And those categories cover many of the committee's focus areas and also touch on city programs. The committee believes there are some real opportunities to take advantage of and receive federal dollars for, which is why we're talking about this today. Outside of the city receiving federal funding for programs, we also see different ways the city can play a role here and provide value to its constituents. The way we see our role defined as Sustainable Wheat Ridge is to make folks aware that these opportunities exist and bring them to the forefront for further consideration. The IRA is made up of twenty-seven programs, and our committee dove into each one of those to assess if synergies exist between what's being offered, what the city is doing currently, and what programs could exist in the future with the help of these dollars. We identified five possible priorities that we'd like to investigate further with staff support. We're also thrilled to report that we've partnered with parks on one of these opportunities in hopes of planting more trees in the city. So that's a bit about the IRA and how we got here, and now I'd like to touch on where we're going from here. Our committee recognizes that this is a giant undertaking, and there's a good chance we're not the only city delving into this massive opportunity. We don't want to duplicate efforts and hope to learn from the Colorado Energy Office, professionals who fully understand the IRA, and other cities on how they're navigating the IRA. We also see opportunities to get the word out to our constituents and help them make sense of it. There are tax incentives available right now that could help our residents, especially those who are low income and who could greatly benefit from reduced energy bills and rebates come tax time. For local businesses, there are dollars available to help train them on newer technologies and electrification, and ideas around overcoming permit hurdles, just to name a few possible avenues for our local businesses. We're in the discovery phase of this and wanted to bring it to council's attention as it could really impact our endeavors in a positive way and make it possible to move the needle toward living and working in a cleaner community for all of our people. Now I'll pass it off to Joy to discuss the other five focus areas.
Thanks, Brittany. So we're gonna start with solar. Sustainable Wheat Ridge has been researching partnerships and ways to promote a variety of solar options in Wheat Ridge. Two possible pathways are community solar and solar cooperatives. Community solar allows multiple individuals or entities to receive electricity from a solar garden. Residents who may be unable to install solar panels due to cost barriers, renting, living in multi-unit dwellings, or other reasons can subscribe to a community solar garden and receive credits for a share of the energy produced, sometimes even providing cost savings to the subscriber. There are a handful of community solar providers operating within Excel's boundaries. Community solar is a powerful tool for expanding solar energy adoption in a way that is also equitable. Solar cooperatives are another way to expand the use of solar energy, providing solar panel installation at a lower cost to residents by bulk purchasing materials. It would be important to consider equity in this type of partnership as costs would still apply to residents. However, low-income rebate programs are sometimes offered alongside this type of partnership. The committee has been exploring partnerships in both of these areas and will continue to do so. Sustainable Wheat Ridge also has plans to create educational materials to inform residents of what options are available and how to pursue them. Sustainable Wheat Ridge has continued to focus on carbon emissions reduction. Last year, the committee created an EV charging station location strategy, prioritizing locations in the city for EV charging. This was used to successfully apply for a third Charge Ahead Colorado grant for two Level Two charging stations at Anderson Park, which will bring the total to six charging stations as city properties available to the public. Additionally, council directed staff to research EV parking and bike storage requirements, and the committee will assist in peer research. Like solar, this focus area presents an opportunity for additional policy and regulatory changes, which will be necessary in order to align with legislation coming from the state. Staff and the committee also see an opportunity to align emissions reduction goals with other major initiatives, including upcoming, the upcoming comprehensive plan. Responsible Waste Management. Culminating several years of research by the committee, council recently awarded funding to implement a contract with HDR Engineering. This will be creating and implementing a public engagement campaign to better understand the public's opinions regarding waste management practices and potentially proposed changes in Wheat Ridge. Some changes could include a pay-as-you-throw system, a preferred hauler contract, districting, municipal hauling, and more. The project is anticipated to last eighteen months, and the committee will support this project in an advisory capacity. Green Business. The committee is also continuing to focus on green business and launching a green business grants program. This program currently has ten thousand dollars available and can provide grants up to a thousand dollars with a fifty percent match from businesses. The committee is working with the Wheat Ridge Business Association and Chamber of Commerce to promote this opportunity. The committee plans to attend pop-up events and begin direct outreach to businesses soon, and is also working to create communication materials on green business options. Additionally, the committee has met with area representatives to learn how best we can partner with an existing program or create a new program specific to Wheat Ridge. In the fall, the city will be hosting a Wheat Ridge one oh two program with the potential for a group of residents to select green business as their project. This group may propose exciting and creative ideas on how to best design and implement a green business program in Wheat Ridge. The Action Plan Update. We are so pleased with the progress we've made on the existing Sustainability Action Plan that was drafted by a volunteer committee several years ago. This slide shows the progress that we have made in implementing the plan, and as you can see, we are over halfway complete on three of our topic areas and nearly one hundred percent complete on three more. The remaining items still in progress are mostly policy-related, and we expect that many of these items will be discussed in the future draft of the action plan. Last year, the committee was awarded a budget of fifty thousand to hire a consulting company to draft a revision to the city's Sustainability Action Plan. Five years ago, when the current plan was released, it was not officially adopted into city policy, and council has expressed desire to have an action plan that can be adopted into policy and integrated into the upcoming comprehensive plan. The time for adopting a revised Sustainability Action Plan includes, the timeline includes drafting the RFP this spring and selecting a consultant before Q three this year. The committee is looking forward to being part of this process and drafting and reviewing the RFPs and assisting as staff selects and implements a new action plan. I'll hand it over to Mary now for programming updates.
All right, thank you, Joy. So Wheat Ridge has continued to partner with Scraps Mile High to provide drop-off compost locations at the rec center and City Hall, and provides residents with two free months of that service. There are currently seventy-six active drop-off members with about a hundred and thirty total participants having come through since the start of the program. Recently, Wheat Ridge participated in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, which was encouraging residents to complete a pledge and activities to conserve water. And that program is something that can be built upon in future years and provides a portal for residents to complete and share their conservation activities and projects, and it also provides a roadmap for local governments to host events and complete projects that could serve as an example to the greater community. Wheat Ridge also participated in the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Program, which was offered through the National Wildlife Federation for the first time last year in two thousand twenty-two. The city issued a proclamation and created educational materials focusing on the importance of pollinators, how to create and protect habitat, and a resource list for pollinator-friendly products. Wheat Ridge is participating in this pledge again this year and is focusing on expanding pollinator-friendly habitats throughout the city. And finally, I'd like to highlight that Wheat Ridge is still partnered with Fresh Food Connect and Family Tree to promote, to promote urban agriculture. And this program allows residents to donate their extra produce from their gardens directly to the family tree, which is then passed on to those individuals and families who are experiencing food insecurity. One of our most popular programs that we have to offer is Garden in a Box, which is offered through Resource Central, and this is Wheat Ridge's third year participating in this program. And to date, we've provided two hundred and thirty-five twenty-five dollar discounts, and it's estimated through this program in Wheat Ridge that about nineteen thousand square feet of lawn has been converted to waterwise landscaping, and that is estimated to save about one and a half million gallons of water over the total lifetime of the gardens. And this program has seen really high demand each year, and so staff is interested in expanding the number and types of programs offered through Resource Central. They also offer a lawn replacement program, Slow the Flow sprinkler audits, and Waterwise Yard educational seminars. And so additionally, as we'll go over in the next presentation, there's a funding opportunity through the state of Colorado to create a turf replacement program, and this type of programming just seems to be really effective and in high demand, and it's a way that we can make a large impact in the water conservation space. We also have the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, and right now we've got four neighborhoods in the program, Applewood Villages, Fruitdale, Panorama Park, and Paramount Heights, and we are working to recruit one to two additional neighborhoods to join the program. We've got applications open right now, and those are open until June thirtieth. And since two thousand twenty, when this program started in Wheat Ridge, the neighborhoods have held one hundred and fifteen events and engaged with five thousand six hundred and ninety-six residents, so it's a really great way for neighborhoods and Sustainable Wheat Ridge, which has several members on the leadership teams for these neighborhoods in the city to make connections with the community and provide opportunities for learning and action, as well as leadership. Neighborhoods have held garden tours, they've created zero-waste clubs, supported local businesses in numerous ways, and held several community-wide events, which again, we'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. And some notable projects that are happening in the Sustainable Neighborhoods right now, Paramount Heights and Applewood Villages are doing a preferred waste hauler program, and they've been successful. Paramount Heights has been successful in getting about half of the neighborhood to sign up for that program, and Applewood Villages, which is a much larger neighborhood, has had about a quarter of their households sign up for a preferred waste hauler in the neighborhood. In addition to that, Paramount Heights and Panorama Park are both working to create native plant demonstration gardens in their respective neighborhood parks, and that'll provide some good visibility and education for the community on water, water conservation. And so I'll wrap us up by highlighting a couple of our community events. So over the past two years, over sixty-seven thousand pounds of paint have been diverted from landfills through our paint recycling events, and we're working on planning another one of those for later in the year. Applewood Villages has held an annual electronics waste recycling event for the past three years, and volunteers have been able to collect over thirteen thousand pounds of electronic waste to be diverted from landfills. And all of the four Sustainable Neighborhoods are in the process of planning another e-waste event for this fall. And lastly, I want to highlight our yard collection events, yard waste collection. Staff receives regular inquiries about how to responsibly manage yard waste, and so we're planning to increase the frequency of these events. These have been held annually since two thousand twenty, and we have collected almost four hundred cubic yards of organic material to be sent for composting and diverted from landfills. So in total, almost one thousand residents have participated, had participated across these couple of programs, and these are a great way to show the city's commitment to sustainability. And so with that, thank you again for having us all here tonight, and as a reminder, this was meant to be an informational presentation, but we're available for any questions that you all may have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. A great presentation. I'll go with questions and go with Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for a fabulous presentation. It's such, like, it's just a privilege to actually be part of this committee. I cannot overstate the passion and skill and brain trust that these committee members contribute to our community. They stay really focused on really important issues that affect all of us. And what started as, I will call, a scrappy collection of determined people that came up with our, our first sustainability plan. We now have seated on, on this particular committee, people who are leaders in our state on building efficiency and transportation and energy use, and, you know, just, I cannot overstate, like, just what, what they bring to the conversation, but I, I really hope that their presentation also highlights that when they first, when they first started, there was just so much energy around programming because sustainability just didn't have a brand identity in our community, and they put so much, so many hours into creating the first plan, but the amount of volunteer hours to actually engage our community and both community opportunities to participate, but also to understand, like, what does sustainability look like in our community? What are we doing to improve it? What can they do? And what I'm really seeing as a, as an observer off council to start with and now seated on council, we're seeing more and more of our residents who are moving here. This is really important to them, and in fact, some of our, some of our new committee members haven't even lived here a year, and they've just jumped on to serve because this is important. So I just really want to call that out, and, and I also want to compliment city staff's integration of a very, I think, pretty ambitious plan with both policy and programming directives in it. Staff's done an amazing job of taking, you know, what's important to the committee and making it happen, and that's consistent everywhere, but here it really, really shines brightly. And lastly, I just am excited that the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program is part of Wheat Ridge. For those not familiar with it, it not only develops sustainable practices at the neighborhood level, but the way the program's engineered is it actually builds like civic infrastructure of neighbor-to-neighbor connectivity and like just a sense of value and what's important at the neighborhood level, and that actually serves our city, both from being more sustainable, but also having stronger civic infrastructure. So Mary, I just want to thank you for coming, stepping in and really serving us well that way, and Joy for a, a lot of years of, of chairing and co-chairing, and I'm just, I have a couple of things later, but I just really wanted to open with a just strong affirmation of the, the skill and passion and time you guys give to our community, because it just, every year gets more important to be good at it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Council, Council, Mayor Protem states.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also, just to echo what Councilmember Hulteen said, I, I think that of all the, we have a lot of committees and a lot of boards and commissions and different things like that, but sometimes really exciting to see what you guys do because you, you really bring us a lot that we get to see, and, and it's, it's a pretty constant stream of, we can see what's, what's constantly going on, not only citywide, but in the neighborhoods. So I really enjoy our Applewood Sustainable Neighborhood Committee. They, they do a great job, but they, they do quite a bit, not only for the environment, but they do a lot to bring our community together, which is, which is really great. Something they did during the pandemic was to bring in the food trucks, and that way people weren't driving and leaving the neighborhoods, doing things like that. So definitely something I appreciate. As far as the neighborhoods go, you said that you had applications open. Have you had any applications yet? Come in for that.
We haven't received any yet. We are actually holding a webinar tomorrow. We've got a couple of people registered for that, so I'm hoping that we'll get some applications from that process.
Okay. Is there, I know you're looking for like two more, is there, are, are we kind of looking to have this kind of develop along with like our, our neighborhood advisation strategy, the people that are going around and doing the, the neighborhood meetings? Are we kind of looking to develop those neighbors with that program as well?
Not necessarily. He gets a really good opportunity to get the word out for Sustainable Neighborhoods through the Let's Talk programs and things like that, but we kind of let, we let neighborhoods pick their own boundaries, and so they're not necessarily predetermined, but that's a really great opportunity for us to at least integrate and educate on the programs that are available.
Cool. Well, thank you. You guys are doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. This is very comprehensive. It took me a while to kind of get through it. I would like, there's a couple small things that I would like to see, I won't point them off, but to, or I guess my question is, do you guys update stuff as some things change? Because there's a couple of things that need to, look like they need to be updated, small things.
Are you talking about the Sustainability Action Plan?
No, I'm talking about like the, where it talks about the RTV route and like the trash. I know some, there's been some consolidation on the trash part. Like pro-disposal got bought out by Waste Connections. I have, and so it's, it's just some of those things, like, I don't know, is this a document that, like, you're updating? Because I'm kind of new to this process.
Yeah, I think so. I think anything that's been created up to this point was kind of all done together back in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, so it will be a good opportunity for us as we go through and update the action plan to make sure that we're updating just anything that has changed, and also figuring out how to consolidate and really make sure that as we kind of try and launch ourselves to the next level, that our goals and action items are feasible, they've been vetted by staff, and yes, updating anything that has changed would be part of that.
And then, and then my other just comment is, there are some things on there about the, like, the credits and stuff for Excel. It's like, I'm on the computer, it's like, what is this? What is this? There's, so it's really educational, and I would love to see just more ways that, as much as we can keep educating the public, there's a lot, there's a lot of information in here, and it's, I know it's tough to try to get everybody on board and educate them, but thank you, thank you so much for your effort. It's, it's very comprehensive.
Yes, solar gardens are a new, you know, they're new, and so educating people on how to be part of it and take advantage of those opportunities is something that we're absolutely going to be focused on going forward.
Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen. Councilor Holtein?
Thanks. So Mary should maybe mention that she has an awesome newsletter that she puts out that does have a lot of good information in it. So if anyone's not already receiving that, please reach out to Mary. A couple things that come up for me, and I'm, you know, I get to, get to join you a couple hours every month on a Thursday, but I think, you know, Joy, when you were talking in your presentation and going over sort of the performance on the plan, which, hello, that's an extraordinary performance on a very extensive plan. So good work. And you were pointing out that, like, the, a lot of the programming stuff, you guys really are at, you know, over eighty, eighty-five percent, nearing a hundred percent, and that the, the big things kind of ahead are a little bit more policy-related. So I guess my first question is, as you're thinking about updating your, the plan, do you, do you, as the chair, would just be sort of curious, like, what the thoughts are in terms of, like, policy focus? And, and I ask just because the, you know, the successes you've had in the last year, you guys are bringing forward really good policies and, like, capstone projects with, like, deep dives into complex federal funding is a tremendous service to the city. So I'd just be sort of curious, like, what the thoughts are on the horizon for, like, policy versus programming?
Yeah. So the original Sustainability Action Plan was created by a group of volunteers and was never adopted as policy. So going forward, we want to work with the consultant to put together an action plan that council will approve and adopt. And I think policy changes will be a big part of that. Because as a, as a community, as a city, we'll be able to make the biggest change through policy adoption, whether it's getting parking lots, EV ready, new rooftops, solar ready, those kinds of things, updating building codes. Those are the kinds of things I think that we'll be tackling as we move forward to a new action plan.
Awesome. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Not really, but I'll just say, I think it's a good opportunity as we're looking through the action plan update. It would be great if we could ask at a later date to have a council member kind of present throughout that process, attending focus groups and things like that. Because like, we've been saying, I think, kind of the energy efficiency and renewable energy transportation spaces are where we've got a lot of opportunity to make progress policy-wise. But I think it's probably in our best interest to wait until we kind of go through that plan update and narrow down, make sure everything is feasible, embedded by staff, and that we can really have a pathway to move forward in those areas. But we'll certainly want council's feedback throughout that process.
Awesome. Thank you. Two other quick things. So we're all aware that the responsible waste management process is starting, and I just want to thank you guys for all the incredible research you did, and it probably saved us from a misstep last year on this. And so I think this is really important. And I'm just really excited that the city's got the communication infrastructure in place right now through its programs, as well as the Sustainable Neighborhood programs, so that the engagement we get around, you know, what, what are the perceived issues and needs and concerns and ways that the city can hopefully, you know, improve that is, is just really helpful. So just expressing excitement. And then it just dawned on me during the presentation, you know, the, the Fresh Food Connect, Fresh Food Connect partnership, it would be really great to, Karen, for, for that to have some partnership with Regenerate Wheat Ridge. Like, the programs that we're doing there, we're reaching backyard gardeners in our community in a focused way. And so even if it's just having literature there, but, you know, through the, through the Regenerate programming, just letting those folks know that we have the partnership with Fresh Food Connects, I think really could serve a lot of people in our community.
Yeah, great idea.
And I just want to point out how far we've come. So when this first conversation started, there was not a consensus on council that this was important work, and I think we've come a long way. And we used to all have plastic water bottles at the table. And I sufficiently have harassed people enough the last couple of years that we rarely see them. And, and it's, and it's just showing that, you know, it's, it's the zeitgeist both at this table and in our community. So just thanks for, thanks for steering us in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the thing that I hear about the most is about the trash, okay? And has a consultant been hired?
Yes. Back in April, council awarded a budget appropriation, so we'll be bringing on HDR engineering to lead us through that process. It's anticipated to last about 18 months, and we are having our kickoff meeting later this week, so should have lots of information to come.
Where is that going to be?
It's just going to be internal with staff.
Oh, okay. Because I do hear a lot about that. And also, as I was reading in here, this is an issue that will go to the voters? Yes or no?
So that is what the engineer will determine through public outreach, as to whether or not we will ask for policy changes, or whether we will just move forward with educational opportunities. So in the neighborhood program, we have a preferred hauler program where it allows people to, you know, be part of a low, a reduced weight, reduced rate for that waste hauler, but it is in no way mandatory. That is an example of something that could be presented as, as information to the community. So that's as far as we're taking it with the consultant.
Yeah. And to add on to that, the purpose of this outreach engagement process with HDR is really just to gather feedback from the public, so we're not making any decisions right now. We'll provide information to council regularly throughout the process, but also at the end with everything we've learned, and then we'd be looking for further direction at that point.
Okay, because it did go to the voters before, and they did not want that, okay? And I see the list of haulers that are here. Who chose those?
I believe that is anyone that wishes to operate in the city, just needs to be licensed.
No, there's, there's others that are not on this list, you know?
That, that action plan's from 2017, 18, so it could be outdated.
It is outdated. Yeah. So that, that is a concern. So, and it would be interesting to know how many people you reach about that, because, you know, 10% out of 32,000 isn't a whole lot. And my concern is, I know however that it did this, city council decided, you do this, you know, and it's fine, but if you don't want to take this hauler, then you pay the city some extra money. It didn't go over too good, did it, some people?
Nope.
Okay. And so I, I don't want it to be like we're controlling something that people are paying for, and also it becomes a monopoly, just like Excel.
Yep.
And it is just like that. So, you know, I know Edgewater has a trash company, One Trash Company, Arvada. Lakewood doesn't.
No, I believe they're still open.
Right. Yeah, that's right. So that's my concern that I've heard from people is, you know, first of all, the cost of what the consultant was, and then also, we should have a voice on this, okay? And that's, that's my main concern about that.
Yeah, and just to reiterate on that, this, that's what this process is, is to hear from the constituents, what they would like the city to do with waste management. No decisions will be made until it comes back to you, as council.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, I had a question. As a, as a business operator in, in Wheat Ridge, I was sort of intrigued about the green business and, and the potential grants for green businesses. Do you have any examples or ideas about how that might operate?
Yeah. So we have not issued any grants yet, but we can do up to $1,000, and we require 50% matching from the participating business. It could really be used for a wide variety of things. If you wanted to, say, upgrade your lighting to more efficient lighting, if you were a restaurant and you wanted to offer, say, a discount, if people were able to bring their own containers versus having to use less sustainable containers to go, you could subsidize part of that cost. But it's really, we don't have too many parameters on what it can be used for, as long as it's used to further the green or sustainable practices of the business.
Okay. And an idea when that will roll out?
Yep. So the, the committee has been working on some educational handouts, and we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce and Business Association to kind of narrow down businesses that may fit in that parameter. The committee's going to start doing direct outreach to those. But we've got information up on the website. We'll try and have a bigger presence in our newsletter and social media, but we are ready to roll that out.
Oh, great. Sounds great. Any further questions from council? Well, thank you for a, for a great report. You know, I, I want to tell you what a great program this has been in the, you know, 17 minus 23 is, you know, the last six years, is that right? You know, it seems like it's been around, you know, forever, but then it seems like a really vital program. You guys have done great work in getting the initial report out. I think you're right that it, the time is, is mature to have, to have a relook at the, at the plan and, and the program going forward. So I'm glad you're pursuing that, and a lot of great, great issues going on, and I think really great support among the community. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll invite our next presenters up. Do we have other people?
We do. We have a big team. We have a big team. We have a Wheat Ridge great team, as always. Get everybody up here, I think.
Going to act two?
Yeah.
Get the ensemble.
Similar topic, but a little bit different.
You know?
Not sure who's going to introduce this one. Who's going to take? Lauren?
I'm going to do it first.
Go ahead. You do it.
We're going to go now to agenda item number two. This is a water-wise landscape regulations and programs. So this is a really interesting program.
Yeah.
Mr. Goff, I'm going to go to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This item was, was brought forward by a few of you to bring forward to a future study session. So staff has put a lot of effort and time in this. And as I mentioned, there's a big group here, so it's kind of, as Mary Ann came into the building this evening, she said, this is kind of ironic. We're talking about this after one of the wettest springs we've had in Colorado, I think, which is great. But I think there's some great recommendations in here and insights. So Lauren, are you going to introduce? You want to make sure we introduce everybody that's on this team?
Probably have some discussion on detention.
Yeah.
Detention and retention.
Presentation tonight, collaboration between our zoning division and sustainability. I think originally when this got put on the agenda, it was phrased as irrigation conservation, and we've sort of broadened that umbrella a little bit, no pun intended, to water-wise, which basically means we're focusing on wise water use in sort of more context. So yeah, despite the downpour we had tonight, you read in some of the background information that the Colorado River Basin has been experiencing historic and prolonged drought for a few decades, and that impacts state, regional, and local water supplies. For that reason, water efficiency and conservation are really increasingly important topics in communities like ours, particularly here in the Front Range and metro area. In Wheat Ridge, we don't control water. You probably know that because you get a water bill from a special district that is not the city, despite the Wheat Ridge Water District name. That's not the city. There are six separate special districts who serve us, all of whom get their water from Denver Water. To the extent that we want to embrace more water-wise principles in Wheat Ridge, we can't control the water supply, but we do have a few different tools that we want to talk to you about tonight. When we think about how we want to change behaviors, it's sometimes easy to simplify it to a carrot-and-stick approach, and we have tools in both of those categories. For tonight's presentation, we're actually going to flip the order that we presented in the memo. We'll talk first about how we're modeling, particularly in the Parks Department, modeling water-wise principles. Second, we can talk about a lot of the programming that you got a preview of through the first presentation tonight. Mary Hester is going to summarize those efforts. Those two, first two sections are really largely informational. We'll pause for questions, but we're not seeking any specific input. The third tool that we have is regulatory. So we can regulate in the zoning code what kind of plantings and landscape and irrigation systems are permitted or required, especially for new development and where landscaping is being changed. We've talked about what zoning is, what can you do, and what can it look like, and that exists in the landscape codes. So we want to ask ourselves, what are, we want to require people to do versus just incentivize, encourage, or educate them. As it relates to the regulatory framework, we do have a few specific questions that we'll be asking, so we can come back to you later with a code amendment. But I think we will go ahead and jump in. I will, I should have introduced, sorry. Stephanie Stevens, senior planner in zoning division. Janet Gassman is our landscape planner. Her position evolved essentially out of landscape inspection program that we started, started as a pilot program, I think, 2016, 17 years ago. We put it on pause during COVID, and then council approved a full-time position, and Janet's got a lot of stories from that program that inform some of our regulatory recommendations tonight. So I'll turn it over to Mary.
Well, thank you, Lauren. So I'll talk about modeling strategies. And Wheat Ridge is already taking several steps to model water-wise landscaping, and Parks is actively testing new products and practices on city properties to minimize the use of traditional turf. And so when possible, Parks has been transitioning from traditional turf to low or no water ground cover, including water-wise plants, mulches, cobble, and stones. And right now, this is mostly occurring in rights-of-way and medians and some areas of tree lawns. Park staff are cautious about removing turf from areas that could be used for recreation, but are looking into future options for those types of areas. And so one example of what Parks has been doing is testing a new product called Dog Tough, which is a low-growth, low-water turf alternative that is dog tolerant. And they've tested a patch of this, which has been planted in city greenhouses. And Parks has also installed a patch of Tohoma 31 at City Hall, which is another type of low-water and low-maintenance grass. And so like I mentioned in the last presentation, two of our Sustainable Neighborhoods, Panorama Park and Paramount Heights, have been working to create native plant Zurich demonstration gardens in their neighborhood parks at high-visibility locations. And so those gardens, which will be supported by Parks and city staff, will be planted and maintained by volunteers in the neighborhoods. And we plan to install some educational signage as well. And so that just goes to show, again, that there is an appetite for water conservation in the community. The Parks Department is also working on a similar educational garden at Randall Park, and many other communities have demonstration gardens like this. And these gardens, combined with all the other work that Parks is doing in this space, are all really great ways for the city to lead by example while educating its residents. And so lastly, for this slide, Parks is also working to educate staff and offers efficient watering trainings to Parks maintenance workers on an annual basis. And they're also working on a reference plant for use by staff to support the use of plants that tend to do well in this area, and therefore are usually low-water-using plants. All right. And so now I will move us into programmatic strategies. This section is meant to be information, informational as well. And I want to note that when we're thinking of residential versus non-residential water conservation strategies, programming may be a more effective way to address residential water conservation, whereas some of the regulatory approaches that Stephanie and Janet will get more into are often geared towards either higher density residential and/or non-residential properties. And so water is one of the six focus areas in our Sustainability Action Plan. So as you may recall from our last presentation, only 7% of those goals and action items were policy-related. So this is really an area where many of the goals and items might goal to in our plan, which is to increase the adoption of water efficiency and conservation measures, are things that can be furthered pretty easily and quickly by programmatic approaches. And so in looking at what our peer communities have been doing, it really became apparent that water conservation programs are pretty heavily relied upon and are really needed in order to make progress in this area. And so many of our peer communities offer multiple programs through Resource Central. Currently, again, we're only participating in Garden in a Box right now, but we are interested in expanding these programmatic offerings to include turf replacement, slow-the-flow, which is sprinkler audits, and then there are also water-wise yard educational seminars available. And again, those programs really seem to be in high demand and don't require a lot of staff time, but they can still have a large and quantifiable impact for us. Another trend that stood out was that most communities that we reached out to offer some sort of indoor and/or outdoor rebates for water-efficient fixtures. The types of rebates that were most frequently offered were for efficient toilets and urinals, smart irrigation controllers, rotary nozzles, and rain barrels. It is important to note here that many of these rebates are offered either through water providers or through municipalities that are their own water providers, which we are not. So it may not make sense for Wheat Ridge to directly offer rebates, but we could look at partnering up with some of our water districts who we do know are offering rebates and promoting those. And several communities have also participated in the Growing Water Smart Program, which is offered through the Sonoran and is offered through the Sonoran Institute, and it comes highly recommended from those communities. So these workshops are free, and they're typically offered a couple times throughout the year in different regions throughout the southwest United States, and they focus on bringing together leaders to learn and collaborate and focus on strategic water planning. So as part of that program, communities each develop an action plan during the workshop, and then afterwards, you're eligible to apply for technical assistance to assist with implementation of that plan. So another thing to note here is that the comprehensive plan right now doesn't currently speak to water planning, but it could as part of the future update, and many other communities have done water planning, so this program could be a good opportunity and a good introduction to water planning for us if that's where these plan updates lead us to. And so lastly, I also want to highlight the EPA WaterSense Partnership Program. That's a voluntary partnership, which a couple of our peer communities also participate in. Communities help to promote water-efficient fixtures and WaterSense labeled products as part of this partnership, and then participate in national outreach campaigns like Fix a Leak Week, so it wouldn't take up much staff time, but would still help to get the word out about water conservation and what products people could use. And so now I would like to share an upcoming grant funding opportunity. So the state of Colorado has launched a turf replacement program, and this program was mandated by a House bill last year, which does suggest that policy may continue to play a bigger role moving forward to create programs and opportunities such as this. This program provides funding to support existing or the creation of new community turf replacement programs, and local governments are eligible to apply. So the next cycle is upcoming. It opens up in July. It does require a dollar-for-dollar matching funds from communities, so staff may return at a later date with that request, but we do need to continue looking into this opportunity as this could result in an administrative burden, whereas Resource Central offers another avenue for turf replacement that may make more sense for Wheat Ridge and alleviate some of that concern.
All right, so we wanted that quick overview. Unless there's questions, we'll just keep going to the regulatory part, if that's okay. So this next section, Stephanie and Janet are going to take turns going through the nine topics. So we outlined in the memo, sort of analyze our code with the lens of peer communities and best practice and our experience to talk about nine different topics. A few of those we're recommending amendments to. We are going to show on the slide a recommendation and the question, but we'll do all the questions and discussions at the end, if that works.
There you go.
Thank you. So in our evaluation of the Wheat Ridge regulatory strategies related to waterwise landscaping, we identified these nine topic areas as areas for more study, and they're listed in your packet, starting on page four. Actually, the topics start on page five. Each of these are currently regulated by code or policy in Wheat Ridge, and we will provide you with a quick summary of each topic and kind of a review of peer trends, and then outline staff recommendations related to each strategy. So topic number one is highlighted, irrigation, the one that started this conversation. Current code requires a functioning irrigation system for all new landscapes and for all types of land uses in Wheat Ridge. Irrigation systems are to be zoned according to specific water needs, and they are to coordinate with any restrictions imposed by the governing water district, of which Wheat Ridge has six. The code includes an ability to waive this requirement for landscapes with an approved xeriscap or waterwise plan. In practice, irrigation is always recommended, particularly during the establishment period of a landscape, and permanently for trees in the landscape. Staff believes that the current code appears adequate to address irrigation for both traditional and waterwise designs, and are not recommending any major changes to the irrigation portions of the landscape code at this time. As a reminder, we will make the recommendations for the slide, but we have time to discuss them and address any questions at the end for each topic area.
So the next one is artificial turf. Interest in artificial turf is increasing in both residential and commercial landscapes, likely due to perceived savings in maintenance and water use. However, artificial turf is currently prohibited per code, and we established an administrative policy in 2021 allowing its use on non-residential sites in limited circumstances, such as playing fields, putting greens, and outdoor seating areas. However, artificial turf areas do not count towards meeting that overall landscape requirement. Staff is recommending codifying the artificial turf policy to allow the limited use in specific contexts, such as those outdoor seating areas or gathering areas, for multi-unit residential and commercial contexts. And we're also looking for direction from council about whether there's interest to allow limited use of artificial turf in low-density residential properties. Some of the perceived benefits of artificial turf are lowered maintenance time and costs, no requirement for water or sunlight, and the ability to choose the blade length. However, there are drawbacks to the product as well, such as high initial cost, difficulty to recycle, and the potential negative environmental impacts of the material. Staff is going to be seeking council direction on whether or not to allow limited use of artificial turf in low-density residential contexts.
The next regulatory topic is for irrigated and non-functional turf. Current Wheat Ridge code limits the permissible area of irrigated turf in both residential and non-residential contexts. And when I say turf, I'm referring to cool-season bluegrass, that's one way to define it, or what we know as the traditional lawn or the grass lawn. Currently, for new single-unit detached and duplex drawing units, turf is limited to no more than fifty percent of the total landscape, and for non-residential developments, turf is limited to no more than thirty-five percent of the total landscape. Turf ordinances in some communities are beginning to focus on two things, either a greater limitation or prohibition of irrigated traditional turf in new single-unit and multi-unit and commercial developments. For example, Aurora and Castle Rock have chosen to take a strong hand and prohibit traditional lawns and front yards, and limit traditional lawns in the backyard to five-hundred square feet. That's a big change in new residential developments. Colorado Springs is taking a slightly different route and is considering limiting irrigated lawn to twenty-five percent of the total landscape area. And Castle Rock estimates that these types of limits on outdoor irrigated lawns could reduce water use by as much as fifty percent in their community when it's completely built out. It should be emphasized here that outdoor watering comprises, on average, fifty percent of total water use from the water districts, and I was really quite shocked at that total. So any impact we can have on outdoor watering can be significant. Based on these current best practices in peer communities, staff recommends modifying the code to further limit the maximum amount of irrigated turf. In addition to lowering overall turf coverage, there is also a move to eliminate what we refer to as non-functional turf. Non-functional turf, one easy way to define it is that it's turf that is rarely stepped on other than to mow it, and it's also turf that is not used for activities, sports, or community events. Examples of non-functional turf areas include things like parking lot islands, street medians, amenity zones, and detention ponds that aren't used for recreational use, and any landscape strip less than eight feet in width. So staff is recommending modifying the code to limit non-functional turf in commercial and multi-unit developments at this time. The next topic area is landscape specifications. The current Wheat Ridge code specifies minimum installation sizes for new plants in terms of what we call caliper, or the diameter of the tree trunk, by height or by container size. This is at installation. The code also specifies the size or types of allowable mulches and ground covers, so we're kind of getting into details here. But for example, shade trees per our code are required to be a minimum of two-inch in diameter, caliper, when planted on multi-unit residential or commercial sites, or two-and-a-half inches in diameter or caliper when planted in the tree lawn or amenity zone. However, city staff, in discussion with them in the Parks Department, they prefer to plant trees at one-and-a-half to two-inch in caliper diameter because, in the right-of-way and in park sites, for quicker adaptation and adjustment to the transplantation, and they tend to grow quicker because they can adjust more quickly. Code requires a five-gallon, another detail, but requires five-gallon pot size for things like shrubs, and actually says, I believe, for grasses. In practice, one-gallon plants are readily available, they're adequate, and they adjust more quickly to transplantation, particularly when we're talking about waterwise landscapes and xeriscapes. And so we'd like to consider allowing that in our code. In addition, xeric and waterwise gardens require a new way of thinking in terms of mulch and ground cover. Traditional shredded bark mulches are giving way to stone and crusher fines and cobble, and what Denver Botanical Garden loves, a product called Squeegee, which is just the craziest name, but that's what it is, and it's just a very small stone, almost pebble-like, mix with sand that allows growth for perennials and waterwise plants while minimizing weed growth. So based on current best practices, staff is recommending revising the specifications to accommodate the smaller plant sizes, the new products, and the move to xeric and waterwise planting practices.
On to topic five, which is low-density residential requirements. So for single-unit and duplex residential properties, they've remained largely unregulated in Wheat Ridge. We simply, our code simply has requirements for front yard landscaping, a total lot area of landscaping, and no more than fifty percent of sod or irrigated turf. So for these low-density uses, programmatic strategies have been well-received, as Mary has previously shared, and there may be challenges to enforcing more stringent requirements. However, staff is receiving a growing number of calls through our Planner of the Day and Building Department inquiries, asking for requirements or direction in renovating existing residential landscapes, and the code provides little guidance. This is particularly true for those interested in establishing xeric and waterwise landscapes. So staff wants to support a move towards xeric and waterwise landscaping and recommends clarifying the options, process, and regulations for residential properties.
Okay, the next topic area is what we're calling non-living landscape materials. I know we've been talking about landscapes, and generally that brings to mind shade trees and shrubs and flowering, all kinds of beautiful flowering things, but our landscapes are also comprised of non-living materials, which include things like mulches, pavers, and what we call hardscape materials, and we have limits on the area of coverage for these in our code currently. In two thousand and one, the two thousand and one revision, the allowable area dedicated to non-living landscape materials was increased from twenty percent to thirty-five percent of the total landscape, but with the move towards xeric or waterwise gardens, a greater area of the landscape might be covered by non-living material, and that might be okay with a good design. This is an intentional design element intended to save resources and should be encouraged if it's balanced with live plantings. To further accommodate this move towards xeric and waterwise landscaping, staff recommends increasing the thirty-five percent limit on non-living material in all districts. And topic number seven is waterwise design. Some, we're finding in the research, it's been an interesting project to study this topic in preparation for this study session. Some landscape ordinances that I've seen are requiring the use of waterwise or low-water-consuming landscape design or practices, and more are encouraging it, like Wheat Ridge is. For example, Arvada encourages the conservation of water resources through efficient irrigation practices, through appropriate plant materials and regular maintenance, while requiring that low-water plants be used for at least seventy-five percent of the landscape for commercial and new development. Lakewood requires a drought-tolerant landscape plan as part of the overall landscape scheme. I found it difficult to find out, to find exactly how they regulate that, even though it's required. That gets into a little more complicated conversation, but communities even our size are starting to discuss this as a topic. So staff is seeking council direction on whether you'd like to require or rather than encourage waterwise design for new development.
And then in addition to complying with code, we also have the streetscape design manual, which multi-unit residential and non-residential sites are required to comply with. The manual establishes standards and guidelines for corridors within the city, and with regard to landscaping, specifies such things as location and spacing, size, form, plant selection, irrigation, and maintenance. The manual also contains a list of recommended trees and shrubs based on plants' ability to adapt to difficult urban conditions, and while specifically designated for plantings in the public right-of-way, the manual has become a useful reference for design of private properties throughout the city as well. Plant varieties are continually evolving to address the specific conditions of the Colorado landscape. The recommended plant list in the streetscape design manuals periodically updated administratively to reflect these changes and will be updated subsequent to this amendment process. So no specific direction is requested at this time on the streetscape design manual.
And then our last topic area has to do with landscape maintenance. Current code holds developers and any subsequent property owners responsible for regular maintenance of the approved landscaping, and this includes weeding, watering, fertilizing, pruning, replacement of dead material or diseased plant material. The city's landscape inspection program, as Lauren mentioned, was established in 2017 to ensure compliance with approved plans. I came on last year to take that project on. It's actually been a lot of fun to work with, and through this program, we have learned a lot of things. Well, I have. I've, generally, I've learned that owners are interested in making site changes to make their landscape more sustainable, water-efficient, in addition to beautiful. Rather than strictly focusing on approved plans, staff sees an opportunity to encourage water-wise renovations, and yes, we've seen that they welcome recommendations that improve water efficiency. Just to tell you a story of something that happened this week, I met with a landscape contractor that's going to do replacements at Vector Bank on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, as well as, actually, West Thirty-Eighth, the apartment complex is also doing their replacements this week. But when I met with the contractor, he told me that when my letter was first received by the bank, they're like, "I can't believe they're asking us to do anything with our landscaping. I can't," you know, "we had to replace shrubs, and they're telling us we have to rip out concrete and put our shrubs back in and all this." He knew that wasn't exactly the case, but after meeting with him and discussing the possibilities of what could be done, because really, we want them to have a successful landscape, not just do what's on the plan, he went back with recommendations to Vector Bank, and they're going to do everything that he recommended and beyond, so they're actually going to end up with a nicer landscape than what they started with, and it will be more water-efficient, and they will solve some of their irrigation issues in the process. So I've had that kind of story happen over and over as I go out and meet with both the owners or their contractors, and so it's been an exciting thing. It's something that Wheat Ridge is doing, and I don't know that any other community is doing, so it's been a neat process to witness. So based on these kind of experiences, we don't expect any significant pushback from if the landscape regulations are updated to encourage waterwise and allow waterwise improvements. And with the growing interest in waterwise landscaping, staff recommends that the code be updated to increase, to include a process for amending landscape plans when plants have not fared well, or where a xeric or waterwise design would be appropriate or a water-saving change.
For those summaries, so we know you may have some questions for us on modeling, programming, or regulatory strategies, just thinking about next steps. So our goal here is to work on a zoning code amendment that would come back to you based on your direction tonight. And so to that end, we have three specific questions. Seeking consensus on our six recommendations, the shorthand version is on the slide, so codifying our artificial turf policy, further limiting irrigated and non-functional turf, updating plant specifications, clarifying the process to replace your front yard if you want to remove all your turf, increasing the allowance for non-living material, and then clarifying the process, as Janet just mentioned, for amending your approved landscape plan. And then the two, not trickier questions, but the ones where we were less comfortable making clear recommendations of whether or not you want us to research expanded use of artificial turf in a lower density residential context. And then if, if you feel like we want to push the limit a little and require water wise versus encourage, particularly in new developments, new commercial and multi-unit developments. So that's a lot. I'll stop there, and we are all here for your questions and consensus, hopefully.
Okay, thank you very much, great report. We'll open it up to questions. Who wants to start? Councilor Ohm.
Are you sure you guys don't want to go? Thank you, Janet and Stephanie and Lauren. This is something I've been looking on the agenda list, and I was like, yay, it's Christmas. I was very excited for this, thank you. And yes, it's a, it's a tough message, you know, we see all the rain and precipitation mode. This is about, you know, thinking about our future, and I support development, and this is just saying that we want to allocate the money that's going down the drain into the developments we have housing for us for a long time. So I'm going to scroll down. I made a couple comments on the, I'm just going to go one by one. On the, on the irrigation, as far as, you know, getting, not having irrigation for the, the xeriscape, I would not recommend that for a couple of reasons. We need, we need to have that drip irrigation because in periods of drought, you know, Denver Water, who provides a lot of the water, they'll say, they'll have different steps, different actions, they'll say you need to start turning off water to your turf, and when you do that, your trees are not going to get watered. And sometimes if you do a project in Aurora, Aurora will actually have you do a separate zone just for, for the trees. And so I would, the only time I would, I would recommend that you not have water is in something, say like a park, you know? We're going to put in some xeric rabbit brush in Prospect Park, it's not going to be feasible to run drip lines in the maintenance of that. And I would strongly recommend, yes, that, that's just going to have to be hand water to establishment, but I, I think typically on, on all the, the commercial and any other type of facility, we definitely need to have permanent irrigation. You can always turn it off, you can always turn it down, but it's a, it's a lot more cost there to come back and put that in. And then on the artificial turf, my, my only thought on that, I'm, I'm not against artificial turf, but I just want us to be cognizant, artificial turf is kind of like carpet. And so when you put it in proximity to a tree, the tree grows, there's roots, it starts pulling it, it's, it's a big mess, and I, and I never want our community to end up with a bunch of artificial turf just going to landfill because it wasn't thought through. There's definitely some advantages when that artificial turf is like on the north side of the house where it's really tough to grow grass and you have dogs, and it's just, that's, that's a good situation, like definitely have artificial turf. So I think, and I don't know how, how we as a city, we prescribe that, but, but that's my thoughts of just, it needs to be thought through, thought through, and I, I just don't want us to have dumpsters of, of artificial turf because it's not working. As far as the, the irrigated non-functional turf, I 100% agree with, with what we're saying on that. You've, you've really done your homework looking at the, the different communities. I'm going to move on to the next one, the landscape specifications. So typically, if you do a project, I don't know why, but if you do a project in Denver, and it's reviewed by Denver Water, Denver Water will require four cubic yards compost per thousand square feet in order to get your CO2. They will ask you for the tickets for that. Even though we're getting the water technically from Denver Water, they don't require that, but four cubic yards seems to be an industry standard. That's something I definitely would like to see. And I think, you know, the other thing you talked about was the, the one gallon, which is something I have not seen, it's very interesting, there is some truth in that, of having a one gallon shrub size versus a five gallon. Five gallons usually an industry standard. I personally, I've gotten a four inch grass, and I had a one gallon grass, and the four gallon or a mill grass, far out competed the one gallon, which was kind of interesting. Having, parking on the, on the one gallon, I almost would see that as a, I don't know that, industry standard is just to, you know, go ahead and use the five gallon, and I would almost say like, hey, you know, what if, what if we look at that one gallon, and I, I think it's a good idea, but what if we also piggybacked it on affordable housing? So when you do, generally, when you do affordable housing, there's usually a partner, CHAFPA, and that CHAFPA entity wants you to use enterprise green criteria. And on the enterprise green criteria, it's using native shrubs, adapted shrubs, and, and then we could look at, to best of my knowledge, and I've done this for a while, there is no five gallon size, it's, it's always city that dictates the size. And so what if on affordable housing, we throw in another little carrot, and we say, hey, guess what, you want to do affordable housing, we'll let you guys use the one gallon. And typically, CHAFPA is going to have strict regulations on the amount of turf that you can have. So it's like, so, you know, and I 100% agree, this isn't about a no turf. If it's, if it's an active space, multifamily, you need to have some grass. And we also need to look at percent slopes too. That's something that, that wasn't in this, is that please look at, you know, allowing the turf in areas where it's pretty flat. And, and so that way, like really getting the best bang out of that water, especially like the multifamilies where you have families, you want to be able to utilize that area, like have, have some turf grass, so they, but they're going to use it. And that's something that Castle Rock has, is that they have like a 2,000 square foot, that might have changed where, where they would allow you to use 2,000 square feet, but it had to be active. It couldn't just be grass, it had to be active. So there were things that had been changing, but that's what I would advocate for. And I think that one gallon is a good idea, but I, I feel like that could be a little carrot that we could use, and at your discretion. I'm just, I'm just showing, saying affordable housing is one thing. As far as the non-living landscape material, typically what I see, and I don't 100% agree with that anymore, is a 75% live coverage and a 25% rock only. And I'm assuming what you're talking about here is a rock only, so there's no plants on top of that 20 to 35%. Is that the case? Or, or-
You're saying, are we, are we suggesting no plants?
So, yes, so what I typically see is, is usually, it's a, you can put rock everywhere.
Right.
But 75% of that-
Needs to be covered.
Needs to be covered with some type of plant. That's typically been the case. There are, there are some municipalities that are like, no, like all your landscape, only 25% of it can be rock, the rest of it has to be all this wood mulch, which I disagree with, because you start looking at like the Marshall Fire, and you, now you've created this area where you have something that'll, that'll burn. And then if you have something in a streetscape, for instance, like Denver has, you know, they, they go kind of back and forth with, allow you to use this three eighth inch rock chip, and the, they want you to use the organic mulch, but I always have concerns, like, okay, what happens when you get that four or five inches in one day? Does the, does all the wood mulch start floating, and then it starts going into our sewers and plugging it up? And so I'm, I'm thinking about that as far as, as far as the mulch. And so I'm assuming that you're talking about bumping that open space, it can all be rock, but only 35% of it is a rock only, no plant.
Yes.
That, that's, is that correct? Okay. And one of the things, when you mentioned the EPA Water Census, there's a video out there called Lessons Learned, because back in the day, Southern Nevada Water Authority, they had the, you know, the $2 rebate for turf, and people would literally just black plastic over their turf, throw a rock on it, and where's my $2? And California was experiencing that. And so I'm in favor of, of having more open area, just so long as we have a little bit of a crafting of like, it can't just be, here's a big swath of nothing. It needs to be a little artistic, you know? I don't think it needs to be super prescriptive, but, but you may need to take a look and make sure that we, we have enough plant quantities to, to kind of make that work. And then, I think that's, I think that's probably it. I know I, I talk pretty fast, but I'm very enthusiastic about this. This is great, this is a really, this is not a small step, this is a big step forward. And, and I think this will really kind of get us aligned, and hopefully push us further down the road of we're, we're being water conscious, and we're saving that water, so that we have it a lot, a lot longer. Because there's been some communities in Colorado in the past year that they've run out of water, they had a stop building permits, it was, it was a mess. And, and I, and I think we, I know we can do a lot better than that, and I really appreciate the city support. And that's the other thing I really, really want to talk about really quickly, is that you can, you can have council that says, I really want us to do some of the study session, then you have staff that does their homework, and then it becomes that ordinance, and, and that's the code. But where it's falling short, and I'm not going to name the municipality that I've seen, is that you have this beautiful ordinance, but then the staff doesn't really 100% buy in, you know? And they kind of get a little wishy washy on you, and so, and then, and then beyond the staff, you have to have that maintenance of, you know, that everybody buys in from the top down, that they're all behind it, we're all moving in that same direction. And if we don't, you know, we're all, we're all stakeholders. And if we, if we don't all have that buy in, it, it just doesn't work very well. And so, you know, do what you guys need to do, but I, I just really want everybody to have a, a buy in and understanding, like this is really what we're trying to do, is we're trying to, we're trying to save that water, but we need, we need support from everybody, from the planners and the staff and the maintenance people, everybody, whether it's the city's maintenance people, or it's the private, it's like, this is what we're trying to do, and we all have to be on that same page. So, sorry about the grandstanding, but I'm very passionate about it, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? We'll go with Counselor Hutchinson.
Thanks, Mayor. As far as irrigation goes, I see a lot on this policy about require, 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 require. Okay, so what about, okay, as far as the irrigation goes, there's no rules for people who own wells. So they can water whenever they want, and that isn't okay. Because that's still everybody's water. So Denver Water doesn't have any regulation, oh, they can do whatever they want. It's the very same as commercial. I can go down the street and I see watering going on, and it's raining. Serious? There's people in the businesses, hello, where are you? Okay, who do you report that to? How come? I've seen that at Crown Hill Cemetery. Okay, it's raining and it's, these huge spigots are going and everything like that, you know? And they might get their water from the irrigation ditch or whatever, but come on. And, you know, I think there should be rules for people who own wells. If other people who get city water have to have some regulations, okay, don't water in the middle of the day, like I do see people that have wells, well, you know, whatever. And then they dry up, and then they complain because they don't have water or something. That needs to be addressed, everybody should be treated the same. Artificial turf, it depends, I know that's at Wheat Ridge High School and things, but there's a thing about artificial turf, and it does depend what it's used for. Regular grass, like if somebody gets hurt or something, okay, and they bleed, it goes down into the ground, it doesn't with artificial turf. And there is an incidence of MRSA, community acquired MRSA, that can be from artificial turf. And so that, that is a real thing. That's a concern that I have always had about that. And then as far as irrigated and non-functional turf, trees will take the water before grass anytime. So their roots go all the way out to where the ends of their branches are. So they're getting the water first, okay? And those roots aren't that deep, okay? We know that when the trees fall over, you know, about that parent. So getting rid of turf and having all this rock and things around is an issue for trees, preservation of trees, and also it's adding more heat to the environment. And grass does have a function, a good function, it helps with CO2, okay? It is a functional thing. And so where, you know, you want to cut back on how much grass is on people's property, what if people have lived there for a long time? Okay, you can only have 25% now, and you have to get rid of this and stuff. People have had fields, they don't do anything to, and the grass, it just grows, you know? That kind of a thing like that, it's like garden by nature instead of all this planned stuff. At my house, what do I do? I pull out things, it just comes up because it's an old property. It's not like new soil that doesn't have a lot of what farms used to have and things like that. And it's like, what's that? Oh, here's this, so you got to pull it out or some, it grows by itself, you know? And I think you have to take into consideration properties. If you want to do this requiring thing and stuff, maybe do it with like new properties, you know, not established properties that have been there forever. I mean, that, that's a concern to me. And trees is my big thing. When we're talking about types of trees, you can look at the Front Range Recommended Tree List, that's from CSU and Botanic Gardens, all this kind of stuff. There are trees like Tree of Heaven, that is, it's not allowed in Denver, and it is in Wheat Ridge, and it's a, like a terrible smelly, noxious kind of a tree. And it just grows and things, that would be a good thing to not, find out what trees should not be allowed here, because they spread all over the place, they grow up in people's yards and things like that. So having a good tree list would be a good idea. But just rocking properties, and I have seen that with the way that our heat is, that's, it's like downtown Denver concrete, and it just gets hotter, and you're planting in, you know, streetscapes and things. A tree needs area to grow, you got to figure out what kind of thing you're planting. They won't grow in a area like this, this wide, you know? I mean, the roots go out as far as where all the branches are, and then, then they just die and it looks ugly and things, so. And they don't provide that much shade anyway in those areas, and then you have to water. And I have concerns too about medians, you know, where you have to water in, in a road, why? So that's, those are just a few things that I think about, but I like the maintenance part, regular maintenance. If anybody wants to come over and do weeding. Especially with this rain.
I walked by your house yesterday, and it looked really green.
Yeah, it's green everything, yes. And this tall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to comment on everything here. I, well, I'll start with just a little story. I was talking yesterday with my son about the agenda today, it's become our Sunday tradition, is he's very curious what we're talking about, and frequently has strong opinions. And he's like, well, I don't, I don't see anywhere on here that you can't just open up the fire hydrants and let them spew water everywhere, we should outlaw that. And I was like, well, I don't think we're doing that anymore, but. So I just want to thank my co-counselor, Scott, for being so passionate and detail oriented on this, it's, it is, it makes a huge difference in terms of being thorough, and for staff for not just taking, you know, the couple of things that could have come up, but really looking comprehensively. So on the artificial turf, I am split on that. I support the first recommendation around the specific contacts, and I support that because that's, those are, those are instances where there's a need and there's a lot more engagement with the city. And typically, it's either civic or commercial owner who tends to have a little bit more sort of regulation around- sort of regulation around maintenance and would do a better job and it's a little bit more limited use of that. I don't support the second one just because I think we lose a little bit more control over how it's used, the type of materials. And having just heard from Sustainable Wheat Ridge, I think the sustainability concerns about it. If residents are trying to reduce their, their turf use, then I'd really would love to see the rest of the things here that are encouraging them to look at other, other options. So, so support the limited, more commercial or specific use, but not, not the low density. On topic three, the irrigated and non-functional turf, I support the first, the first recommendation. The second recommendation, I think is a little bit more complex to me. There, there's a, there's, there's a couple of churches in my neighborhood and one is just has a beautiful lawn that like our, our neighborhood actually uses, we're in a park desert in my neighborhood and the church has been really open about like the lawn is for the community to use. And our, our community values that. There's another church just a little east of the one with the big lawn that has that kind of more like strip, strip lawns. So I can kind of see that like difference between like a little non-functional. But we're, what comes to mind to me is, is we have more of these multifamily housing units come up, like we have people with pets. And if we're not providing some sort of like lawn for those pets, then those residents are going to be walking their dogs more into the neighborhood and creating some tension and conflict. So I think we can, I would like a little bit more nuance in that regulatory environment, recognizing that for some commercial, i- if it's just for aesthetics, then there's really no need or purpose. But if, but there is function to it that may not be the obvious of, you know, sports or things like that. So would, would appreciate eyes on sort of discerning where that function may be. And then the last one, I'll, I'll let you guys guess which one of these I'm like flagrantly in violation of at my house, but the non-living landscape.
Astro turf.
I have no astro turf. On the non-living landscape materials, I really, I like that. I think that's, I'm, in the last couple of months, just in my little neighborhood, four people have replaced their front, front yards. And so I'm, you know, that's just happening. And for the most part, it looks pretty good today. We'll see how it looks in a couple of years. But I really support, you know, allowing people to, to come up with other, other non-turf options. The, without getting into the detail of Councilor Ohm, how does it work with new plantings, right? Like if you're talking about like a 35% coverage or something? When I put that cute little plant that, you know, I got at Young's in the ground, it's not going to cover a lot of ground. And in a couple of years, it could cover a lot of ground. So is that measurement by like anticipated mature growth of like this?
It generally refers to at maturity.
Okay.
So plants could go in at a small size, but at maturity, they would cover a percentage of that.
Okay. And I think those were my only specific things. I think generally I really like sort of the, as Lauren said, the carrot and stick approach here. And I think there's a lot of places where we do have more control and we should exercise that and we should really be aggressive with that because that, that is, those are places where we have a lot more future impact. And then in residential areas with people who are interested in reducing their, their turf, I think, you know, ways that we can support them and encourage that and get rid of regulatory limitations, but not let them have artificial turf. I, I think, I think this is, yeah, I think, I think the intent of this comprehensively really does a great job of that. And I think policies like this will, will make a difference for, you know, the near term and, and the long term. I think future generations need, need us to be thinking about this. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Prokhorstites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilor Holtine and Councilor Ohm were pretty detailed in, in their answers to the questions. I, I agree with pretty much everything they said. I do think that, I, I agree with Councilor Holtine. I was kind of torn on the artificial turf because I do see the, the pros and the cons to it. But I think maybe, you know, small sections, kind of like Councilor Ohm said, dog walks, things like that makes sense, but not entire yards. I, I do think that as we move into requiring things, I, I like the idea of requiring it for new development, maybe not for stuff that's existing. I do, like if you were going to do something to your house and you needed to remodel your kitchen, you'd have to bring it up to code, right? Would that be the same? I guess, I guess that would be something we decide or is that something that you were recommending?
We have a lot of flexibility, like if there's an addition or a change of use. So we really only enforce the majority of our landscape regulations the first time something is developed. Our main goal after that is to make sure it's thriving and that's where Janice sort of problem solving is coming. I think that's where we have the biggest gap right now in our code as we see it. When somebody comes in and says, I'd like to remove my front yard, what can I do? We have significantly less clarity in terms of like, well, you could do this much rock or this much mulch or. So we'd like to provide more resources and clarity versus sort of a heavy-handed regulatory approach, just better answers. Because again, the, the sort of regulatory approach to your comment earlier, it really comes in with the first planting when it's new.
Yeah, I, I like that. And I like requiring that for new development. I think that's, as we move forward, that's, that's kind of where we can do the most good. But thank you for all these recommendations. I think this went a lot further than I thought it was going to go, so thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. And one of them is sort of, you know, how we, how we deal with, with the public right of way and particularly tree lawn. And I know it's a thorny issue and probably way beyond the scope of what we, what we have here. But before, actually before we get there, I'm kind of curious, we're doing maybe the largest street that we've ever rebuilt in, in Wheat Ridge, which is Wadsworth Boulevard. And we're going to have a pretty, a pretty wide landscaped opportunity in there. What, what's the plan for that? Is that a, is that a water-wise design?
Yeah, we're reassessing the irrigation, I think per this council's direction, but there's no turf in that design. So it was native grasses, trees, rocks. But it is irrigated and sort of how we irrigate it and just fine tuning that design is underway.
Okay, thanks. And then I am, I, I don't know what to do about, about tree lawns because they come in, you know, a number of varieties and it, and it's hard to say who's, who's sort of taking care of and what the most effective way to take care of them. And so I, I will sort of move that back into your court, but, but say that somewhere along the line, we, we need to sort of address that. You know, I, I have a large, I have a large lot and I've got a large grass area and a big, a big garden area. And I was, Mary and I were looking at the grass area the other day and thinking about, well, you know, because we've experienced in, in my walks, a lot of neighborhoods putting in, putting in ziriskape and it looks really good and done, done real well. I never would have thought to go down and get a permit to do my landscape. So if that's something that we're thinking about, I think that's a, a real question that we need to address. And I, I can see, you know, on the initial build out that you would, that you would do that, but I think it would be really problematic to, to sort of, and maybe, you know, maybe we're, we're able to develop guidelines for, to advise people on how to do that or, you know, so if you're going to do it, this might be a, a good way and these are good resources to go to, to, to achieve those, those ends. Sort of funny story on the, on the astro turf, the house across the alley about two years ago, they tore out the grass and put in astro turf. So the new owners have bought it, you know, this spring and, and, you know, a month or two ago, they tore out the astro turf and, and actually put a dumpster next to the house to put it in. And the folks apparently across the street saw it and liked it, so they took it out of the dumpster. And have now put it in their, put it in their backyard. So it, you know, it, it goes down the first time pretty well. I, you know, the second time it's sort of, it's installation is significantly more challenging when you have to re, you know, recycle it, but I, you know, it did recycle, so for a ways. But anyway, I, I think that was sort of, that was sort of all I had to, had to do. This is a great, a great topic. I, you know, I think we're, we're sort of fortunate and not that we don't have our own water utility in Wheat Ridge, but we're certainly responsible for the water that we use. And I think that we need to really move this, you know, up into the, up into the consciousness of all of our, all of our residents here, so. Do we need to sort of generate a, do we have any more questions or do we need to generate a consensus, Councilor Ohm?
Yeah, I just had one question for, for Lauren. So I guess, and the mayor kind of brought this up. So generally speaking, this code, is this, is this for primarily new development? Or is this a, hey, everybody in Wheat Ridge, you're now going to have to pull a permit if you need to do your, your residential lawn or something?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think generally it's for new development that we would see through a site plan review and a landscape plan. The, the comment about the permit is a good one and what I think of in that context is fences. So we have requirements in the code about fences, but no one's required to get a permit and almost every residential yard has a fence. And a lot of the reason for that is people sort of see what is the norm of the community. And the outliers from a landscape standpoint in our community are the few that put artificial turf in the front yard or fully rocked the front yard where it's like, oh, not everybody's doing that and maybe for a reason, right? We see those same outliers when somebody builds a fence too tall, maybe in the front yard. And there's a lot of peer reporting that comes out of that. So I think our intent would be that the, most of these regulatory changes would be assessed through a landscape plan as they currently are, multi-unit and commercial context. And then the guidance we could provide in terms of allowances for residential front yards is really becomes more of a resource, not a permit in the same way that we do for a lot of fence inquiries day to day.
Thank you. And that was, that was kind of my assumption that I was not trying to pick a fight with all my neighbors of, hey, you know, I have turf in my front yard and I'd love to get rid of it, but it's neither here nor there. But I don't know if that helps Councilmember Holtine as far as like the church has existing grass. No one's going to, staff's not going to go and make them rip it out because we have a new code. That's not the, that's not the intent. It's for new development.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson, did you have a hand up?
This might go back to the previous thing we were talking about, but the gardens that's going to be at Randall Park, okay? I understood there, it was supposed to be a community garden, like the happiness garden, like where you grow food and things like that. Is that right or no? Or is it just supposed to be for native plants or?
I think we're doing both.
Yeah, it's still under design, but they'll be a community garden.
Okay, thank you.
Then, then a segue to that, at, at Panorama Park, is that in the little island, if you will, next to the ball field or across the street from the ball field? When you say the southwest corner, is that where that is?
Yeah, kind of those like edged off already areas.
Yeah, yeah. Next between, next to the playground and the, and the baseball diamond.
Yeah, right next to the diamond.
On the west side.
So there's room to expand.
Yeah, no, that looks great. Okay. So we probably, we have a sort of a question in front of us.
Yeah, Lauren, do we still need consensus on all three of those? Or did you think you got it from the discussion?
I mean, I think we've probably got it from the discussion. If I can summarize briefly, I think that what I heard is there is support for all of those six items in the first question, that we don't probably need to explore substantially the use of artificial turf in low-density residential areas. We may look at it in terms of if there's a dog run area or some sort of limited use in a backyard, we can bring that to you in the next study session, but not, not opening that door in a very wide way. And then that we, it sounded to me, and I'd love this clarity, that we would be interested in requiring water-wise design for new multi-unit and commercial contexts.
Consensus on that? Yes.
Stay ahead, Bonnie. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Where do we go from here? Was that?
That's it on this item?
Is that it on this item?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Great, great presentation, great discussion and a really important topic. So thanks so much. Be a second here for the next team to get loaded.
Thanks, guys.
Are we still sharing? There's Lauren. We need Lauren.
I can't, we're not finding it.
Oh, it's the green outline. It's still lawn.
Oh, duh. I don't know how to.
Lauren's got it.
Who's that?
Is somebody clicking?
What's happening?
Who has the, who has the clicker?
Do you have the clicker?
Somebody's pushing.
Terrific, thank you. We will go to our agenda, item number three. This is a discussion of the Metropolitan Football Stadium District Funding for Youth and Activity Programs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A fun topic here. We gave you an update several months ago. It was kind of a surprise, we got this letter and a check in the mail from the Denver, or from, from the stadium district. And so kind of some money thrown in our lap at, at last minute, a good chunk of money. And our team is here this evening to talk about some proposals on how to use those funds. So Karen?
Wonderful. Thanks for having us this evening. Suzie Anderson, our Recreation Manager, is going to talk you through the funding, the process and the recommendations. But I just wanted to let you know that, I don't know if all of you know Suzie, but she's been with the city for 30 years. And when this opportunity came up, she asked if she could take the lead to really gain her project management skills. And she's collaborated, collaborated with a bunch of different employees throughout the city. And then of course she'll tell you a little bit about interacting with youth in the community, but also specifically our Parks Project Coordinator, who's done a lot of projects similar to this to really kind of help her every step of the way. So without further ado, Suzie, take the lead.
Karen? All right. So I want to just go out first, I don't know, but this PowerPoint presentation, we have a lot of feedback. I think, so I did want to give a little bit of history about June, who has used to be our Recreation Coordinator, because now we've gone to our special events involved here, our coordinator from Philly. And she did help me with some of the contractors and workers to help with the property and the nation, who are kind of like connected to the community and the, she's ran some kind of, I just want to say the name of her. So I just think I did a little bit of background. September of 2022, the city's youth knows, as Patrick said, about the Metropolitan Football Stadium District, stating that the sale of the Denver Bronx Football Club, which is in Congress, of course, the original legislation, was created that families have to have two and release a management unit which ties the franchise and tax care and facility and kind of field at Mile High and set the purpose of the counties, cities and towns within a seven county federal boundary. The 4.65 billion sale of the Bronx franchise resulted in a sharing amount of over $41 million dollars. The city of Wheat Ridge proportion amount was the 512 million dollars, so a little over half a million dollars. And the requirements for that.
Oh, you put your mic, Suzie.
The requirements for that were that we spend that, those funds on youth that would, with activities or programs or facilities for the youth of Wheat Ridge. So what I did is went in and spoke to three different groups of youth and we reviewed the plans and the options that were available to them. We had discussion about each one of those seven items that were available. I received feedback from the youth and then I'm here to present this final project finding, findings that the youth recommended. And then once we And then, once we go through the move-through, then we would secure proposals and contracts. So, this first item is a very large park that would be installed at Anderson Park. So, the, there's current, play, did I say, well, okay, install, playground, at, not the park, sorry, at stall, installed at Anderson Park, thank you. So, currently at Anderson Park, towards the back of the park, there's a nature area that was recently put in. So, this park would be installed right next door to that. And the design of this park, playground, is nature-themed, so it kind of goes along with that nature area. I have an awesome video, which I don't know how to do that on the clicker, to hit play, have to go ahead and play on it? This is a video that Game Time put together, that's kind of the 3D version to take a look at the park. And I'm gonna let this video continue to play, it's gonna show you the second item If you don't mind, yeah, thank you. All right, so that second half of that video was this item here. And this item would be replacing what's currently at Anderson Park. There's a blue and red playground structure there, that's about 15 years old, I think, Parks Division said. And they would be looking at needing to replace that piece within the next year or so. So, this item here could be replace, replace that. The next two items are also items that can replace in this section as well. Give you a little bit of background on the rail rider, which is the fun little piece where the kids can ride back and forth. We currently have that piece in our possession, we've already paid for it. So, it is, putting this, the rest of this playground in is, the cost of installing that rail rider piece goes along with that, in, in the quote. Did you want to say anything else about that piece? I think, from my understanding, it could, because it was purchased before I started with the city, but it was part of the Anderson Park renovation project, but there just wasn't funding to install it at the time. So, that's why we have the piece and would like the opportunity to install it. Thank you, Karen. Yeah. Item three is, I don't have a cool fancy video on this one, that I kind of imagine it. So, again, that rail rider piece is in there, and then it's a different structure, as you can see, a lot of upper body moving around the equipment. The one thing in the nature playground that we feel is lacking a little bit, in, is the upper body strength piece, and this, all three of these pieces really brings in the upper body strength to it. Item four is, again, the rail rider, with that, that big structure there, with a lot of really fun, crazy stuff to do. Now, these, and, can you, can you do it again? Or, yeah, yeah, the link, so I, the, these next three items have links to them that will show you what these pieces do, and they are inflexible pieces, this, or, or maybe not. So, the next three pieces, this one we would look at next, item number five on the presentation, is what's called Memo, and it's by a company named Yalp. And this Memo piece could also be installed at Anderson Park, where current, the current blue and red playground is. This is a piece where it has, no, darn, okay. So, this is a piece where those pillars that come out of the ground have, they're interactive, so the kids can go up and touch them, and it's kind of almost like a Simon Says kind of a thing. And so, the kids, the family, can go around and touch them and play games and stuff on them. The, the first thing the kids ask me is, well, does the thing go around in a circle, like a mirror go around? No, it doesn't, it's stationary. All three of these pieces are waterproof or made for outdoors, they're also so, solar-powered, which is nice. Clicker's not working? I know, sorry, okay. There we go, there, thank you. This piece is called Sona by Yalp, and our thought was to, thank you, Ally, our thought was, as a possibility of installing this up in the green, with, with the design going on at the green. And this is a pretty cool piece that we were able to actually see and try out at our annual conference, and it also has interactive games. So, there's pieces that you touch on the side of it that start it up, and it, the platform on the bottom works with the fun stuff that the machine is set up with. So, also, again, solar-powered. This piece here is called Phono, and we were thinking a good place for this would be installed at the Recreation Center next to the barn. So, we do have a lot of Everett kids that come over after school and hang out in that area, so we thought it could be something really constructive that they might be interested in. You plug your cellphone into it, and it's like a DJ booth. Also, the adults' first question, can we control the volume? The answer is yes, you can set the max volume on it, so it's at an appropriate level for wherever you have it installed. So, next, I'd just kind of like to show you what, what I did is provided a feedback form. I directed the kids that were a part, we had a total of about 58 children, that were a part of the feedback process, and I asked them, we had some really little, six years old, on up to 14, and so, some of them gave some really great feedback, and others gave stars and circles and check marks, that kind of told me which ones were their favorite. I did ask them to circle, circle their top two favorites, and if they wanted to leave detailed feedback, to definitely do that. So, I did throw in a couple of examples, because I thought they were really cute, so you could see, see a little bit what they looked like. With, with the kiddos, I did finish with this quote, and then had some more conversation around the seven items that, that they got to view, and they had a lot of really fun, interesting questions along the way. And so, again, thank them for their feedback and being a part of their community. So, the, these are some pictures of the, some of the kids during the presentations. We did go into the sun camp, which today was the first day of sun camp, went in and chatted with them, and then we had a separate meeting over at the Recreation Center as well, and invited all of the youth that have signed up for our recreation programs through our RecTrack system. So, it's really cute, this is a seven-year-old, so you can kind of see how, yeah, a lot of scribbles and comments and love this one, I even got some I hate this one, that ate, very honest feedback from them, which is what I asked for. And this was a little bit older child who, you know, filled out some nice comments about each piece. And again, what I asked them to do, when they were all done writing their comments and giving me their feedback on the forms, I asked them to circle their top two favorites. So, this is what we came up with, and by a long shot, long, not a long shot, that's the, the wrong way around. Whatever way you look at it, we had the best feedback for that big park. And the big park is about $385,000 to build, we do have a proposal, a quote on that, and the other piece was about $70,000, and that was the one with the rail rider and the kind of little, the upper body set. So, that was the top feedback there. There was another piece that, a second piece, which one was it, that was right up there, item four, was right up there. This particular item that's up here was one vote higher than item four. The difficult part, not only, and the kids made it really easy for me, because the difficult part is, when, when you have a budget and you have to stick to that, and then you need to have some contingency money left over, you need the, the budget to match up. And so, I was really worried they were gonna pick two items that wouldn't, couldn't go together budget-wise, and they picked the perfect two together, that we could get two pieces done. The item four was about $10,000 over our budget to have the contingency, contingency money left over that we needed to have. So, it worked out really well. So, in conclusion, these two items with the most positive feedback, total about $454,000. And I do have final quotes from both Game Time and Recreation Plus for those two pieces, and both of them would be installed at Anderson Park. So, that leaves us with about $69,000 contingency fund left over for just, anything as we know that can come up. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, uh, Councilor Hutchinson.
I am so glad that you spoke to the kids, because this is for them, and they decide what they want. And the first playground that you showed, where is that by, where, you know, music in the park is?
Okay, so, the amphitheater is in the far back, the closest to the green belt. So, with the amphitheater sitting kind of in the middle, you have the red and blue playground off to the right, if you're facing it. Off to the left is where the current nature area is at, so it would be right next to that nature area. You cross the parking lot from where the performance and parks are held.
So, in the second picture, that has the rail thing, you're thinking that we, the city could use what we already have for the rail?
Yeah, we have that piece in already, it's in box, so, yeah, so we're hoping to.
You have to put it together? And, the first picture that I saw of the playground, it showed to me where there could be some children that might be handicapped, that would be able to be in that first one. Go for it. They used to have that at the old Stevens Elementary, that's now Sebeski or whatever, I don't know if it's still there or not, but I was really impressed to see that, and I think that's very important. I agree with the kids.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think the kids have really good taste and came up with a good idea here. I was gonna say that some of those other ones, the machine ones, kind of seem like a fountain, like it seems like it could be a good idea, but I think you're gonna spend half the time fixing it. So, hopefully, I think that these will work a lot better, and I know my son would definitely vote for the rail rider thing, I think. When, when do we expect the stuff to be installed, once, once it's all approved?
So, the companies, the company of the bigger park, Game Time, they had said they're about 12 weeks out to get the equipment in, once they order it. So, depending on weather, as we know in Colorado, it could start to be installed later on in the fall, and then it may be waylaid because of the weather, but about 12 weeks out is what they had said.
So, we think for next summer, it'll be all ready to go? Sweet, cool. Thank you. We'll go to Councilor Olm, and then Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I got a couple of questions to have, is one, is there currently any drainage under the EWF and the existing one, and will there be some drainage in the new park area, the new one, the bigger one, nature one?
I'm not entirely sure, I do know that there's, there are drainage issues in the existing playground area, the, in, in the sense of, I think it was like the Hundred Year Flood situation, where we don't anticipate it being a ongoing problem, but it could be for small periods of time.
Because that one's pretty small, but the, were you planning on, on tying that large one into like storm for drainage, drain tile?
That would be a Mark Root question, I don't know if you, I know that he's aware, and I can get back to you, I don't know the answer to that.
And then, the, the DJ feature, was, what is that, I couldn't, I was having trouble, it's going near the barn, but is it, my big question is, it looked like it was interior, is it exterior or interior?
It's exterior.
Exterior.
Yeah, yeah, so on that one slide, there is a picture above that shows in kind of a park setting, where they have benches around it, and, but it, you can also get it with an umbrella that goes over the top of it, to kind of shade structure kind of thing, but it is designed to be outdoors.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be interesting, and maybe that would pull them away from hanging out by the, the tunnel.
That was our, really was our thought, like, let's give them, let's give the kiddos that come over from Everett something constructive to do. And I think that that would be a really nice item for that, but there are, there's definitely some concerns around, is it gonna last? You know, just, graffiti.
Well, and I just, I had, the only concern I had is more for just the weather, is it, is it weatherproof, rainproof, snowproof? Some proof, I don't know.
According to the company, it is.
And then, on the, on the stuff that's going in Anderson Park, the, the new one, does that have, will that be ADA accessible from a sidewalk? So, somebody parks them in the parking lot, and they'll be able to take an ADA ramp?
Yes.
From the parking lot, onto sidewalk, get around to that area, yeah?
Yes, all that was taken into consideration when I, I met with Parks, the Parks Division, and spoke with Mark, as well as the companies, they have regulations that they have to build by. There is a new ramp coming up with the cement path going around it, the, the entire park, which will be accessible, as well as the wood chips, if they're installed, what I understand is the wood chips that would be in there, if they're installed correctly, that's also accessible for, to get willed objects through them.
Yeah, the engineered wood fiber.
Yes.
Okay, and I, I like the engineered wood fiber versus the, the poured-in-place, the rubber. I think the context fits the site really well, too. Thank you.
And just to speak to that, too, if we wanted to do pour-in-place, we couldn't even afford the full first option, unfortunately, so, but it, but we have, we have confirmed, as Suzie said, that it is ADA accessible.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. Gosh, when there's only four of us, we all got to just chat you up. So I will just concur. I think it's really wonderful to engage the youth in this conversation. I did a little bit of consulting work for Great Outdoors Colorado. Sorry. At the end of a long day, acronyms are escaping me. And it was just really fun when we engaged the kids on like, you know, what they enjoyed and what they really liked. And having spent a lot of time at Anderson Park with my own kid and other kids, you know, the current playground is just inadequate for the play demand. And it's, I was recently at Anderson Park with my, my sister's got twins that are four years old and then a two-year-old daughter, so they're busy. And they love Anderson Park, though, and they love, they love the nature play area. It's actually like a fan favorite of theirs for sure. But like with the two-year-old, my sister was like really struggling to kind of like keep track around the playground because it was all like high-up stuff. And so I really am excited to see like a pretty dynamic play structure that would really meet the play demand, but also meet a variety of like ages and abilities. One thing that comes to mind for me is in my work when I was doing some consulting on play equipment, one thing that's really important is to put in benches and seating areas for parents around. So is that part of this as well?
Yes, it is. So there are, I believe, there's benches within the structure where kids could come up and sit or parents. There's also benches around the unit. They're in the pictures there, they're hard to see.
Okay.
But they, yes, definitely, places for parents to sit.
Okay, great. And I am not going to second-guess kids' guidance on things, but I am sort of curious when, when the Anderson Park Master Plan was coming together, when we approved the bond initiative, a bike park was like this third-ranked thing. And I'm just wondering like if that's a conversation that's being had about something for Anderson Park or one of our parks? Because it ranked, it was like literally like the third or fourth community priority for Anderson Park and then didn't make the final plan. And I'm just wondering if a bike park or pump track is being considered there or somewhere else in the city.
It's definitely in conversation. It did come up during the open space management plan, conversations with the public as well. Not as frequently, but definitely something we are discussing and will consider for future.
Okay. All right, that'd be great to see that because there's, most of our neighboring communities have one and they're really heavily utilized. And it's just a great way to build bike skills for kids if we want them to be doing healthy, healthy activities as they get older. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Great, great presentation. Any further questions? Mr. Ohm.
Just one. Councilmember Hulteen, could you explain what the bike pump track is? I know where it is, but it's somewhere, audience may not.
I wish I had a video. It's just, it's, it's a, it's an area in which there's a dirt track and there's little skill sets. So there's little like jumps and bumps and depending on like how extravagant it is, there can be like rails and, but it just really teaches kids like how to ride, ride their bikes on surfaces other than hard surfaces. And in fact, Rhythm Cycles on 44th, they actually have a small one for their clients to try out. And it's kind of like when you go to REI, there's, there's one in front of REI. So it's just a small, like dedicated skills track which helps with like jumps and uneven surfaces. And they're just, it's really fun. Kids super love them. So I have, I have places I know that I think would be wonderful if you want to get serious about it, but I think it would just be a great thing for a community to have. And I think having one off of the Clear Creek Trail would be really great because it would be accessible by bike and could really activate some of our park spaces in a way that would attract people, not just from within our community, but from outside our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have consensus to move these forward? Looks like we do. Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susie.
Look forward to riding the rails. All right. That concludes our three active agenda items. Let's now go to, I think we've got staff comments. Pascov.
Yeah, nothing else for me this evening. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to elected officials' reports. And I think our treasurer had something short that he was going to bring us.
City clerk.
A city clerk, excuse me.
Thank you.
He's always got a new name for you.
Good thing. I will be attending a family memorial service next week. Robin Eaton will be here in my place. After the last election and the protests about the number of signatures that are required to refer an ordinance to the voters, there was a lot of controversy about how many people voted in Wheat Ridge in the last governor's election. Working with the county elections people, we have come up with an answer to that question. And we can give you a definitive number as soon as we have finished checking to make sure that every single person we are counting as a Wheat Ridge voter lives in Wheat Ridge. I will give the council a much more detailed report at a future council meeting. The last thing I want to report is, you recall that last Fall of Force Council voted to hire Judge Basso to hear the protest of my decision that their petition was insufficient. Protesters have now appealed that decision, Judge Basso's decision and mine, saying we overstepped our authority under Section 106 of the Colorado's revised statutes. In order to get the hearing, in order for the judge to review all of that, they were ordered to pay $4,200 to create a record on paper of what was discussed in those 12 hours of hearings. Tuesday last, an hour and 42 minutes before the deadline, they came in and paid $4,200. What that means is that this case will continue at least until Christmas, according to the lawyers. Because it will take weeks to transcribe the record and then it will take weeks to get the judge to review it and issue an order. Our lawyers tell me that our decision and Judge Basso's decision will stand at the end of the day based on having dealt with similar cases in the past. I am now looking forward and what we are going to do the next time there is a referendum petition. And I will have more detail on that in the report when I'm able to issue. It ain't over, but it's over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselors. Counselor Hutchinson.
I happened to read in the Denver Post on the front page about new owners of the old Luckys, which is going to be 13 pickleball courts inside. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. I'm sorry, I should have given an update on that. It kind of came up, came into the press before it came to us. Honestly, we knew there was a potential it was coming. But they're going to lease the building from the current owner. But yeah, it's going to be a sports activity building indoor with multiple sports, including, yeah, 13, I think it's going to be the largest indoor in Colorado, pickleball. But they're also going to have some additional activities such as the driving range. Why, I can always forget, Ally, what's our favorite game?
Cornhole.
Cornhole, maybe some cornhole pits and food and drinks. So, yeah, so it sounds like it's moving forward.
It's no bingo.
No bingo, yep.
Will they have a liquor license?
They will apply for a liquor license, yes.
All right. Additional comments? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I may pick up pickleball eventually if this happens. A couple of things, Counselor Ohm and I had a small but engaging District Two meeting on Saturday. Oh, and it was cold. It was really cold. But it's just always really great when people show up and want to talk about the things they care about. And it was a very thoughtful conversation, really, really grateful for that. Before going to that, I took my adorable new dog for a long walk and we walked by Happiness Gardens. And it just couldn't have been a more delightful scene. It was a plant giveaway. And so there were gardeners busy in the community garden. And then there was plant giveaway of like really cool heritage plants and people just really having a good time and connecting. And I got to talk to YY, who's our, our community gardener. And if you, if y'all haven't been by Happiness Gardens lately, go check it out. It is a gem. I just, Karen, you guys are doing amazing things. There's these demonstration gardens, it's really activated. You know, the Food Forest has gone in, there's a bunch of trees, the sidewalk connects all the way across the property now. So people are like me walking their dogs. And it just, to me, was just the epitome of a Wheat Ridge Saturday morning. And it just, and I didn't know the event was going on, so it was kind of a surprise. And it just made me really excited. We have good things in District Two. And then today, the governor signed SB 200, which I'm sure y'all know your House bill or your Senate bills this year. It's the basically red light or speeding enforcement bill. It goes into effect next year, but allows jurisdictions by referendum to allow broader red light or speeding enforcement on their most dangerous roads. So nothing to do today, but it'd be really great by the time we are able to that we are allowing better enforcement for speeding because speeding kills. And as we electrify our transportation system, which I'm very in support of, we are making those cars heavier and that makes them more dangerous. So, so really, you know, I don't think we have a huge speeding problem. 44th can get a little dicey. So anyway, the state's allowing us to have more tools for enforcement. And I hope, I hope next year we're, we're ready to step into that space. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with Counselor Hulteen, at least as far as Happiness Gardens is really awesome. I was there for the Food Forest dedication a couple of weeks ago and it's really grown up since the last time I was there. It's really cool. But on to District Three, which is obviously, you know, cooler. I wanted to thank Local Works for coming to District Three and hanging out at Gold's Market on Saturday for their business block party, is what she was calling it. Yeah, this block party. It's really cool to spotlight all those really cool businesses that are going on in there. And as usual, District Three being awesome.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
I do have a question regarding the District Three. When is the Live Slow? Have there been any word of when that's going to open?
Yeah, I talked to the owner, the developer, or got an email in the last week or so, and they're hoping this summer, Live Slow. So I think they might have said before Labor Day. And the legal Pete, there were some rumors out there, I heard at an event, that they're not coming, but that's not true. They're still coming, they haven't, they're still working on their plans. They haven't submitted with the city yet. So they're still planning to come. I don't have a date, but hopefully the summer Live Slow will be in.
And then I had one question, speaking of speeding, along 38th, I was driving, and this isn't the first time where people have blown through Allison Street, it's a red light. I was on it one day and there was a truck probably coming about 50 miles an hour and just blew right through that red light. But my question is, is the, when you go westbound on 38th, there's the, there's a low speed sign that says like this is where the speed limit is. And I had these two cars zip past me and they were, I don't know if they were really racing per se, but it was showing 48 miles an hour on 35th, which I thought was pretty fast until a member of my family said, no, I've seen it hit 80 with somebody on there. And that's really fast on 38th. My question is, is does that speed sign collect any data? If not, could we, could we get something so that we would have a better, I mean, I see it and I have a perception that things are going pretty fast because I see that, but would it be possible to have something that would actually record it? Not, because you can't really put one of those big signs out there. There's no room for it. It would block pedestrian or a lane, but something that could record data, it may be more in a stealthier way, I guess, you know?
Yes.
Just, just record that and just come back in a month and be like, what is going on on 38th?
Yeah. Unfortunately, those speed boards don't collect data. I don't know why. They're big enough, you'd think they would have the technology. But we do have, the police department has purchased recently, I think we have two monitoring systems that are stealth that you don't really know where they're at. And we're moving them around the city on areas that we're receiving the most complaints to get a perception or get a, not a perception, but to get actual data on how many, how many cars are traveling through, what the top speed is, what the low speed is, what the median speed is. And we're presenting that information out on social media so people, people know. It's like, because a lot of it is perception. And we've been finding that, you know, they'll count for a good week or so and it'd be like 1,000 cars maybe were monitored. And, you know, there's, so far, I can say, very few of the cars are going 80 miles an hour or even at a level that they'd probably get pulled over. So there is an education, I think, too. I think a lot of people, I even do on my street, and my chief always gives me a hard time. He thinks I, I always tell him, they're going 80. He says, mm, they're probably not. So we're trying to educate, but also get the data to see what the actual, where the busy, the speediest streets are and what the true speeds are. Because it's hard to tell with the, just the, just the naked eye, I think. But yeah, we have them and they're being rotated throughout the city. And we're, we'll have the chief come maybe some night and report out on what we're seeing. But we are posting those, that information out on social media right now.
Thank you. Thank you. I see our treasurer, Mr. Miller, here tonight. Anything for public comment?
I'm sorry. I was just going to.
Well, we would let, you know, we'll.
It is clear that I'm going to be out.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. And thank you, thanks to all our folks for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge for being here tonight and our staff to discuss the water-wise landscaping and our, and our decisions on that. And the football district, we've got a nice new playground equipment coming for our youth and that's great. I will be having coffee with the mayor at Vanola's Italian Restaurant and Deli on 38th Avenue this Saturday at nine o'clock. So if you're not doing anything else, please come down and join us. We will be back here a week from tonight at 6:30 for a regular meeting. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.